And Mr. Ott, you're good with this now?
Yeah, there was, I'd say, significant research that was done by both Hainault Engineering and our office to confirm that there will be any potential stormwater management issues here. As far as regulations go, it's been confirmed to the planning commission as well, and they're satisfied. The concern we discussed at the planning commission was the installation of the stormwater system in the courtyard area that faces the South Mountain View, and how the stormwater system piping goes through the building. And we made it clear that, and we've had recent issues in the borough with flooding, and we wanted to make sure that the people at Phoebe understood that, that the borough's really not going to be responsible for any of that. That's a private system, and you guys need to cope with that. And Mr. Williams has basically laid my fears by engineering calculations and the number of inlet rates that are going to be in that courtyard area. So as long as the system is maintained properly, there shouldn't be any issue with flooding. It's just sort of a weird arrangement. I know the look they're going for is a little great, but there's some rating challenges there, and you just got to go over that and make it work.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Dinkelacher, so for council, in your iPads, there's a discussion point about the easement and the sidewalk waiver. And so, can we get into that discussion a little bit? Because you had essentially rolled out four different options for the sidewalk easement requests that they had put in. And can you just take us through that and explain to us exactly what council's considering? Maybe what might be the ideal consideration for council and how you want us to move forward with that piece of it?
Sure. As with many land development plans, and these are no exception, you see requests for waivers of the subdivision and the land development ordinance. And the waivers are pretty generic, there's nothing unusual, and there's nothing that we don't see regularly. Many of the waivers here had to do with drafting requirements for the plans, and those waivers, no issues, all generally recommended, approved by the planning commission. The only waiver that popped up that there was real discussion on, and it's embodied in paragraph number five of the resolution itself, is the question relating to the waiver of the obligation to construct curbs and sidewalks, you know, along the perimeter areas of the property where there are streets. And that's a requirement of the subdivision ordinance or the zoning ordinance that don't require, well, it wouldn't be, it would be subdivision ordinance if it was zoning, it would be a different matter. But it's a requirement of the subdivision ordinance, and the applicant asked for a waiver. And, you know, the waiver is, has merit because it's a large property, and, you know, whether or not you want to build curbs and sidewalks all around it, where curbs and sidewalks might not otherwise exist, you know, there's a legitimate request. However, what the planning commission said was, well, we want some conditions on the grant of this waiver. So you will see under paragraph five that there are three conditions, and Attorney Bubba made reference to them. A, that the general public would have access to the existing trail system. B, that a gravel access to the existing trail would be constructed near the site of the Dance Academy. And C, that the 10th Street sidewalk would be extended to the old Rodale Retail Store. Now, a lot of these landmarks I'm not personally familiar with, but I'm assuming that everybody here knows what they are and where they are and gets the picture. The only issue that pops up is that, now, Attorney Bubba forwarded a trail easement agreement, and I think the borough just simply needs to understand what happens if you accept the trail easement. If you accept the trail easement, that becomes land that you become responsible for, the land that is within that easement. Under Pennsylvania law, you have immunity from suit as a governmental entity, except for land that is, one of the exceptions to that is land that's under your control. When you have an easement, you have control. And I think this particular easement agreement, although we haven't really had any, I haven't had any discussions with Attorney Bubba about the easement agreement, the easement agreement, if I recall correctly, places maintenance and repair obligations on the borough. So the borough would have to maintain the trail, this one mile plus of trails going through the property. You know, is that unfair generally as a requirement if somebody's going to turn over trails to the borough? No, it's not a blatantly unfair request. The issue, though, that I think you have to balance here is that this is part of a waiver request, meaning instead of giving you curbs and sidewalks, we are willing to give you access to a trail. So there really is a quid pro quo here. Now, it's not only going to be borough residents that are walking on this trail, residents of Phoebe, I would assume, would use the trail as well. But regardless, what Phoebe is proposing is a trail easement. The other issue that comes with an easement and comes with the possibility of liability is how do you allocate responsibility for an accident that might occur on that trail between the owner of the land, which in this case is Phoebe, and the borough that has an interest in the trail? And we get into issues that are called indemnity issues. And indemnity usually is a situation where one person or one entity agrees to pay or to respond to the liability that another entity might have. And we get into, we can get into issues as to, to what degree do you indemnify another party? Do you indemnify a party for only the negligence that you cause as the person responsible for repairing the trail? Do you indemnify a party where there's a combination of liability between two parties? Or do you indemnify a party even for a party's own negligence? You can do all three of those things, there's a continuum. So if we're going to accept an easement, then you have to think about, well, what's the relationship between the owner of the land and the borough that has the easement? And how do we work out, if there's an accident, how do we work out who's at fault for that and who pays? And do you provide a lawyer to the other party? Do you pay for the other party's court costs? There's a lot of considerations that go into that. So in the memo that I sent, or the email that I sent, you know, I think it's up to council, as part of a condition that the trail be open to the public, do you want to accept the responsibility of an easement? And maybe without the easement, Rodale doesn't want to give public access to the trail. I can't say that, I don't know. But I think question one is, is if you want the trail, do you want to accept responsibility with an easement? And then secondly, I think it becomes a legal issue, how do you work out this indemnity situation where one party agrees to protect the other party? And a good example might be, the classic example might be, somebody's walking on the trail. Somebody trips on the trail. Maybe there's a log on the trail, maybe there's a hole in the trail, somebody trips and falls. Chances are, Phoebe gets sued because they own the land. Chances are, the borough gets sued because the borough has to operate and maintain a trail. The borough has limits of liability as a municipal entity. Phoebe doesn't have those limits of liability. So you get into a very complicated situation there in terms of how you deal with that situation. Another example, and this is kind of the stuff you deal with in law school, but let's say that the trail goes through a wooded area, and there's a dead tree along the trail. Somebody's walking on a trail, branch breaks off the dead tree, falls into person walking on trail, kills the person on the trail. The dead tree was on Rodale's land, but the branch is hanging over the trail. Who's responsible? Now, maybe the borough gets sued and Rodale gets sued, and both parties have some joint responsibility. So there could be a situation where two entities are both sued. So these indemnity obligations are contractual that define the legal relationships between the parties in the event of an accident. And I think the borough has to be very, very careful. If you accept a trail easement, what are you responsible for beyond just your own acts of negligence? And if you're going to say, we're only going to be responsible for our acts, we're not having any responsibility to Phoebe, if we did it, we're responsible for it, trail easement can be written that way. But remember, too, that I think part of it always is going to be an obligation by the borough to maintain and to repair that trail, which means you're going to have to have people out there looking over it and making sure that it is in condition for the public to be walking on it. So that's the issue that is popping up in this context. And the only reason, the only thing that really sets it apart from a typical, you know, a typical offer for some recreation space is that here it is in, it is a quid pro quo for us waiving curbs and sidewalks. So that's the issue, and I'm happy to answer any questions that council have. I know, I'm sure Attorney Bubba will have some comments, but if you guys have any questions for me, first on that.
Yeah, so again, let's go back to, make it simple.
Right.
What is your recommendation to us?
Well, my recommendation is, if you want, if you make a trail a condition of the sidewalk waiver, then it is, and it's open to the public, then it is a trail open to the public if the developer accepts that condition. In other words, you don't have to have an easement. The developer can make the land open to the public as a condition of approval of the waiver of curbs and sidewalks. If you want to accept a trail easement, then my recommendation would be that in the indemnity clauses, that you agree that the only grounds for indemnifying Phoebe would be where the borough is negligent, and the only reason why Phoebe is being sued is because of our negligence, if you understand that. In other words, you're not indemnifying Phoebe. If there's joint negligence, you're not indemnifying Phoebe or providing a defense if there's acts of negligence on Phoebe's part. It's only if the borough is sued and Phoebe is sued because the borough did something wrong, then you will indemnify Phoebe because Phoebe is being sued as the landowner even though we did something wrong. But we also have to say, too, that the indemnification is limited to our limited liability under the tort claims law. Because our limited liability under tort claims law is $500,000. Somebody got killed on the trail, and you have a million dollar claim, the borough's limited at $500,000.
Tom, I'm just going to say, I don't think you simplified it like Shane asked.
It's not, you know what?
In fact, I think I see our heads spinning.
It's not, but it's not simple. The simplest thing is to say, is to say, Phoebe, it's your trail, but you got to open it to the public.
Can I try to simplify this because we have a little bit more information?
Oh, we're going to go from one law to the other.
This should make it easier.
Go ahead.
When I drafted the trail easement, we weren't exactly sure where we stood from a liability perspective. We've had calls. We wanted to make sure that if somebody could sue us, before I was trying to shift it to the borough, thinking that you had immunity. We've now learned 99% that we can insure against this risk.
I'm sorry, you can or can't?
We can.
Okay.
Phoebe can insure against this risk. So on the first issue, let me suggest that Phoebe will maintain the trail, okay? That makes that part simple. We're no longer trying to shift the maintenance to the borough unless, of course, you want it. It's been maintained probably for 25 years by Rodale. We'll just continue that process and maintain that. It is our land. We're not going to pull back the easement. This is Phoebe's, you know, first foray as a member of this community, and they've told everyone all along that they're going to be a community member and that that trail was going to be open, and so we won't pull that back. So this isn't a bargaining chip. And frankly, subject to getting the written confirmation, Phoebe's self-insured for the first several million dollars, but there's still a risk retention group, almost like an underwriter, so they can't make that decision unilaterally. If they tell us that under the comprehensive general liability policy that's in place, members of the public were insured against the claims for damages by members of the public, we won't try to shift that liability, and the indemnification will be limited to what Mr. Dinkelacher said, that we will only be indemnified in the event that the cause of the damages is the borough's own negligence or gross misconduct. So I didn't want to interject, but we've learned a lot since I drafted that, where I was trying to shift that to the borough, and I wanted to let everybody know that.
So that the borough understands, then, is that, and I'm not sure, Joe, where the borough ends up with liability if Phoebe's going to maintain the trail? If Phoebe's going to maintain the trail, where is the borough even liable at this point under the tort claims act?
Frankly, frankly, I can't think of a scenario.
Neither can I.
But let me just say something. Let's just say that you were plowing snow on Arch Street, right? You weren't even trying to touch the trail, but somehow or another you pushed all the snow and buried somebody there.
Okay.
That's the borough's negligence on the trail that we had nothing, had nothing to do with our maintenance.
And I know that we have insurance that will step up for that, subject to the tort limits, tort claims act.
Frankly, as revised, Mr. Dinkelacher, the borough really won't even have any need to go onto the property.
I would have.
Unless you happen to be a member of the public who wants to go.
No, but if you're going to be, if you're going to be responsible for the maintenance, there's really no reason, you know, then I don't, I think we're fine.
Oh, I forgot one thing. Our insurance carrier said we have to be able to limit those uses which increase risk. So it's going to be open for walking trails, jogging, walking dogs on a leash, no motorbikes, no bicycles, no horseback riding, none of those things that would increase our risk, and we have to be able to post those rules and regulations. No alcohol, no after dark, all the things that you typically see.
It's your property, so you would be able to post it any way you wanted to post it. Yeah, I think that answers the question. What I hear being said is, subject to their insurance company's approval, there wouldn't be an easement, it would be open to the public, the borough's liability would be if, in doing something else, it caused some kind of harm, which is always going to be the case. But if the borough's not taking an easement, then the borough has no liability or responsibility for the property, and I think we're all in good shape. So it's subject, Joe, to your folks confirming that you have coverage.
So, Mr. Dinkelacher, in terms of what council needs to vote on this evening, what are we looking at? We have a resolution here.
The resolution chain is drafted already to accommodate the scenario that was just discussed. You need no change to the resolution. It says the general public shall continue to have access to the existing trail system. Now, if something comes back that we need to have some kind of an agreement, we can, I can work directly with Shane and Joe, and if, and we can bring that agreement back before council, but I think at this juncture, the resolution as drafted needs no change.
Except for cosmetic changes, I said.
Which are already made.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I'm going to open this up for questions from council right now because I'm sure there's questions.
Mr. Heiberg, and Shane, maybe you can ring my bell on this, but Fields at Indian Creek has a walking trail. There were no special anything when that was part of their development or anything?
They owned the trail.
And it's open to the public. I know I walked on it with my daughter.
Now, there may have been easements and things that were covered.
Well, there's, the homeowner's declaration for Fields at Indian Creek opens the trail up to the public, but there are no indemnity requirements or anything like that.
So the difference between that and this, or what?
Not much. The trail is maintained by the homeowner's association there, just like the trail would propose to be maintained by Phoebe here, with the public being allowed to walk on it. Now, the only legal difference was, was that under the type of development that Phoebe had, Phoebe, Indian Creek had, under that type of development, the developer was required to have recreational facilities. At the request of the municipalities, they opened those recreational facilities to the public. So it's very, very similar.
Okay. And then, as far as this is for us, we're not owning it, we're not responsible for it, it's all on them, is the way the motion is, the way the resolution, excuse me, is now.
The resolution is worded that way, it accommodates that result. If we have to go back to further considerations because Phoebe has insurance issues, we would come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? I have a question. We talked about stormwater and two detention ponds, and it was mentioned that Phoebe will be responsible for them because they're privately owned. You mentioned they'll work properly as long as they're maintained. What is our?
I'm sorry.
The question's going to be for you, so I'm waiting.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't, I thought it was an engineering issue you were going to with.
So the stormwater detention ponds, it was mentioned they'll work properly as long as they're maintained. What I want to know is, what is the borough's recourse if they're not retained and they become an issue?
The borough, the borough, as we discussed at the last meeting with the Mayas Commerce Center, the borough will have an operation and maintenance agreement with Phoebe for the stormwater facilities. And what the operation and maintenance agreement says, and it's a condition of approval, the operation and maintenance agreement is going to say that if Phoebe doesn't maintain, the borough can come in and do the maintenance and pass the cost on to Phoebe.
This is the same thing, same issue as you mentioned.
It's the same. It protects the borough, but the borough, but Phoebe will also have obligations. There will be what is called a post-construction stormwater management plan, which says how all these things are operated.
Okay. So we have recourse, I just want to make sure we have.
Yes, so you, there are a lot of avenues for recourse.
And my second question is for Mr. Ott, or Bubba, Mr. Bubba. We're wavering, we're giving a waiver for the curbs and sidewalks, but what I want to know is, where along our roads are curbs not currently?
Look at this drawing. Everywhere in red.
And what street is that?
This is, this is Arch Street.
Okay.
From 10th to Wilson.
So it's this level with the ground, is grass next to it?
Actually, Chris, because we had very thorough requests for the waiver explaining why, so we'll explain why here, and we'll explain why this ran the astral over here.
So Arch Street currently just has curb, there's no sidewalk.
Okay, I'm just, actually, let me be more specific. I'm looking for specific spots where there's no curb at all along one of our public roads.
So that would be south 10th Street, south of Furnace Street. So at that point, there is a trail connection that goes up the side of the hill there. So it's going to the south there, along south 10th Street, there is no curb and no sidewalk. And that continues across into the advanced video property, and then further down all the way to the train tracks, there's no curb or sidewalk.
The reason I bring that up is, as you know, when there's no curb next to a road, it helps with the deterioration of the road because the water gets underneath there, it erodes and the structure of the road. And that's just my concern, if we were to ever redo a road, it wouldn't hold up because there's no curbing then. Is this waiver permanently? Or can, if we redo a road, are they, are we able to have them put curb in at that time?
My recollection is, is that under the borough code, if you, if you construct, when you're constructing roads and sidewalks independently of a municipal land development plan, my recollection, Brent, is that you can require that the owners along the area of the road, on the basis of their foot frontage, contribute to that cost.
Is that only a reconstruction, or is that a repaving also?
I think that it's a decision whether or not to do curbs and sidewalks.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not interested in the sidewalk, I'm interested in curbing for preserving the road only, that's all.
Yeah, I think, my recollection is that that is an independent requirement of the borough code that is unrelated to land development, so that could apply anywhere in the borough.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any more questions, anybody else? All right, so at this point, all we have is the resolution to approve before us? And would you like to read the resolution?
Yep, I have Borough of Mayas, Lehigh County Resolution Number 2019-26, a resolution conditionally approving the preliminary slash final lot consolidation and preliminary slash final land development plans of Phoebe Richland Healthcare Center, Chestnut Ridge at Rodale. It was set in the form of a motion.
There's a motion by Councilman Shipstah, is there a second? Councilman Hart, questions or debate?
No, I just want to say that, you know, I'm glad that we resolved this because a lot of people do use that trail, and it does require maintenance. The trees around the area are getting old, they're falling, and there's a lot of washout on some of the hill areas there when we get some heavy storms, so I'm glad that we resolved that issue.
Any other questions or comments? I have one question, and Shane, I know you addressed this with me privately already, but I'd never ask this solicitor. And I am an employee of Phoebe Allentown, and I just was wondering if I should abstain from this or not. I get obviously no financial gain, I'm in a union, I'm under contract.
That's exactly what we were discussing.
That's what we were discussing a moment ago. You have to have a financial interest, or a family member has to have a financial interest, and I think being an employee of a larger company like that does not create a conflict of interest for you.
Thank you. All right, with that being said, anybody else ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, say no. There are seven ayes.
This is a resolution that everyone needs to sign.
Okay. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Thank you all, thank you.
Can I ask one question that has nothing to do with this with regards to the, just for informational purposes? How many, how many people is it estimated that will be employed from this whole development area, like lawn maintenance, maybe food workers, lifeguards, whatnot? Any, like a range, maybe? Just, we get excited about stuff like that.
Like somewhere in the 30, 35 range?
That will be employed through this property?
Yes, right.
Thank you, it's always nice to know.
Laundry workers, not laundry, housekeepers, food workers.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, obviously.
Lawn care.
Yeah, and then.
Trail care.
Maybe like. Trail maintenance.
Thank you very much. It's always, we always like to hear stuff like that, so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ott, there's nothing else on the agenda, so he's going to head home, too.
Thank you very much. There's no Monday Night Football, but maybe you can watch the Phils lose another one.
Hey!
Hey, they're not doing so good, I'm losing hope.
You are not a very good team supporter.
15 to 1, come on.
Game's bad.
All right. Mr. Shipstah, you're a committee, this is the longest committee meeting I've ever had.
Longest committee I've ever had. Good night.
Good night.
See you, Jeff. All right, what's up next? Okay, so, we have in your iPads the Assistant Code Official Job Description, and we have worked on this extensively for, how long now? I can't remember. A few meetings, right, at least?
Six months.
Probably two, three months.
Yeah, six months.
Yep, so, as you can see, it's a very detailed job description. Shane, thank you very much for putting in the recycling part.
Yeah, it's just that version that I sent you for some reason didn't have it.
It wasn't anywhere in there.
Yeah, but we got it back in, I apologize for that.
No, that's all right. Nope, so, there's a lot of things that this person will be doing, and a lot of assistance work, and also serving as a refuse and recycling coordinator, performing a lot of rental inspections, property enforcement code violations, and assisting, of course, our code officer with a lot of the things that they have to do, such as curb and sidewalk permits, applications for opening and permits, keeping detailed information, land subdivision, land development. We pretty much, I think, covered it. Shane, do you have anything else? I mean, we have, this is a very detailed job description.
So the goal, the goal is, obviously, you know, they're going to have their primary duties, and then their second duties are to provide, you know, some assistance to our code official, with the ultimate goal that they will, you know, hopefully be able to obtain the proper certifications, already have them coming in, that they will ultimately become our code official. That's really the goal. I mean, obviously, you know, we have certain requirements that they're going to have to do within six months or a year.
Yep.
But we're looking at a succession plan, which, you know, we talk about in every department, and this is part of a succession plan, but also to address a lot of the things that one person just can't get to in a town of 12,000 people, and that's reality.
It is.
And we've been talking about that for five, six, seven years.
For a while.
So this is all budgeted, this is all part of the plan and the process.
Yeah, I'm glad we're actually doing this. And also, in the recycling part of it, actually opens it up for us to go after some grants and stuffs because we didn't qualify because of not having.
We meet the Act 101 requirement by doing this.
Yep, which is very nice. So, does anybody have any questions, concerns?
No. So, we're going to make a motion? So, we're going to make a motion to approve it? Do we have to approve this?
We need to adopt the job description, yes.
Okay.
I did have one, we're going to eliminate one line in the job description, right?
That's correct, I'm sorry, yeah. So, so one thing is, we looked at some of the ambiguous language in there, and we talk about physical aspects that they have to be able to perform, and then we put one like they have to be able to stand up and walk. But two lines above that, they have to be able to climb ladders, stoops, do all that stuff. So we got rid of the ambiguous language and deleted the, they have to be able to walk and stand piece of it, so we just cleaned that up. So the version that you have just had that line in it, we cleaned that up for the final version, so we would delete that line because the other physical aspects are covered.
All right, would you like to place a motion?
Yep, I'll place this in the form of a motion to approve the Assistant Code Official Job Description, so we can advertise.
So a motion by Councilman Shipstah, seconded by Councilman Andrews. Questions, discussion?
I just want to point out that we already did advertise.
Ah, there you go.
It is in the newspapers and...
Well, there we go.
We've already, I mean, we received 15 applications already.
Wow.
Now, Indeed.com was the majority of them, and we have, you know, nurses and some other things that applied for a code officer job, but there's also some, some that are experienced in the building trade already. So this is open through July 26th, I mean, it's a long application period.
It's on several sites though, right?
Yeah, so it's in Indeed.com, it's on our website, our Facebook page, Morning Call, I know, got an ad, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs got an ad, Penbach got an ad, and East Penn Press received an ad as well, so it's in, it's in six or seven different avenues.
Great. Anybody else? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There are seven ayes.
All right. What's next? We have, our committee notes are in there, if anybody has any questions on those. I don't think we have anything in there with anybody. We are currently working on the mural ordinance, right? Shane, we get a draft on that?
Yeah, I think the committee needs to sit down with our solicitor again and figure out where we want to go with it.
Okay.
I think we just need to get a little bit of a clearer direction.
Yeah.
And then we can draft...
Okay.
Whatever it is we want to do.
Okay, great. And our next meeting is scheduled for June 26th at 4:30 PM. Progress.
Thank you, Chairman Shipstah. Parks and Recreation Committee Chairman, Chairwoman Baumgartner.
We need to have official action for the RFP, right?
To approve it.
Yep. Okay, so one item for official action. This is for the swimming pool study RFP, which we've talked about before and during budget season, so, but I will let Shane, if you want to give some background in terms of what's covered for that.
Sure. So as, as you see in the, the action piece in your iPad, I wrote a note to you saying that there will be some minor cosmetic changes, some verbiage, some other things. As far as content, there's going to be one or two additional things to make it compliant with DCNR requirements, so we have it sent off to Pennsylvania DCNR to review it for us, just to make sure that this RFP is, would be compliant, so that if we, if we get, well, not if, when we do the study, and we wanted to apply for a construction grant, that the study is in compliance with DCNR requirements. So that's, that would be something that we need to make sure that the RFP for the study and the study itself is in compliance with what Pennsylvania DCNR would require. So we know that there's a few cosmetic changes that we need to make, but essentially, content-wise, we think we're pretty close. We're going to ask you to approve going out for the study. Again, it was a budgeted item, you understand from budget discussions, we spent a lot of time talking about this, this is the other piece of the comprehensive recreational and park study that we're doing, and we would like you to give us the authority to go out for the RFP with any minor changes that we need to make with it, so it'll be compliant.
You place that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
A motion by Councilwoman Baumgartner, seconded by Councilman Shipstah. Questions or discussion on the RFP? Harry Nun, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There are seven ayes.
And that's all for official action. Our next meeting is July 2nd at 4:30 PM. Progress.
Thank you, Chairwoman Baumgartner. Public Safety Committee Chairman DeFrain.
There's nothing for official action tonight. You can see the committee meeting notes, any updates from the different departments. If there's no questions, I report progress, and the next meeting is July 10th at 9:15 AM.
Thank you, Chairman DeFrain. General Administration, that is myself. We have the South Mountain Cycle Conditional Use Approval for the Craft Brewery slash Winery. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve the conditional use? Councilman Hart, seconded by Councilwoman McManaman. Any questions or discussion?
Is there anything in addition?
Hours, anything?
I don't think, if we didn't limit the other ones for hours, and they're saying 11 o'clock, I'm fine with that, but...
Mr. Solicitor, is there anything that they need to...
No, I, I, I think that where we are at this point is, it can be a motion to recommend, it could be a motion to approve the conditional use, or a motion to approve with conditions. If somebody wants to propose a condition and council agree, other than that, I don't see, in terms of what was presented by the applicants, I don't see a legal issue with the approval. Looks to me to be consistent with the ordinance, and I know that Jim Farnsworth didn't point out any inconsistencies with the ordinance either.
Councilman Hart?
Mr. Solicitor, if we chose down the road to institute an ordinance for all of these type facilities, let's say for hours of operation, we could do that at that point?
Probably not, because with zoning, you would, you get into issues of non-conforming uses, so uses that were approved prior to an ordinance sometimes, not always, but sometimes are grandfathered. Performance issues, that's hard to say. That's a hard one. A subsequent performance issue, you may or may not, it may or may not work. I can't just say off the top of the cuff.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There are seven ayes. Best of luck.
Yeah, I'm sorry, so the next step is...
So the next step will be that I will prepare a written decision, and I'll have it available for council to sign at the next meeting. It'll be, it'll be like a resolution, the way we do a resolution, but it'll be a signature by each council person on the decision, and I think the borough has 45 days to get, to get it done, but I think we'll probably get it done quicker than that.
Thank you. You may go home now. Sorry you had to wait for that. All right, next we have Resolution 2019-27, a resolution in accordance with the Municipal Records Act of January 18, 1968, as approved for local government records by the Pennsylvania Historical and Museum Commission Bureau of Archives and History, as approved by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on December 18, 2008, and amended July 23, 2009, authorizing the Borough of Mayas to dispose of certain municipal records. Would somebody like to approve Resolution 2019-27? Councilman DeFrain, seconded by Councilwoman McManaman. Any discussion on it? Just continuing with cleaning house, so. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There are seven ayes. We already addressed Ordinance 1191. There's two sets of meeting minutes, if anybody has any questions on, I think it was total of six pages. If not, I report progress. Budget and Finance Committee Chairman Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Budget and Finance Committee proposed Resolution 2019-25, paying bills through January, I'm sorry, June 7th, totaling $727,286.98. Unless there are any questions, I'd offer that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on our floor to approve the bill list. Resolution 2019-25, seconded by Councilman DeFrain. Questions on the bill list? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There are seven ayes.
Secondly, there was a meeting on June 6th of the Budget and Finance Committee. We had a discussion receipt of the pension audit. We talked about, we began discussions again around the five-year plan. Unless there are any questions regarding the notes that were included in your packet, I would report progress. Our next meeting is July 15th, 6:45 PM.
Thank you, Chairman Hart. Community, yeah, Community Relations Planning and Development Committee Chairwoman McManaman.
Nothing for official action tonight. Our next meeting is Thursday, June 20th. I report progress.
Thank you. Junior Council Members, report. Jonas, one of these days I'm going to get you involved in one of our debates, and just I'm going to pop a question at you, I promise, I'm going to get you involved in one of these things. So, don't look like a deer in a headlight. I might, I'll try to keep it simple, maybe a yes or no question, but you sit here all night, and I'm sure you're learning stuff, but I'd like to hear your opinion once in a while.
Okay.
All right.
The school ends Tuesday, we had our final exams ended on Friday, and I'm really excited to be joining in on the CRD meeting starting Thursday, and hopefully working on a project this summer.
Nice.
I report progress.
Thank you. You have nine sets of boards and commission meeting minutes, and some reports in there. Personal appeals part two, anybody have a personal appeal? Harry Nun, Borough Managers Report.
In your iPads, a memorandum, I have hired Daniel Bowser and Aaron LaCorte as EMTs, starting rate 1482 per hour. They will fill needs and gaps that we have in our schedule, so, so we've hired them. I think we're probably looking for another two EMTs at this point, and then we should be hopefully close to full staff. Obviously, EMTs, I mean, you guys see it, I hire EMTs on a rolling basis. It's one of those jobs where unfortunately, EMTs in most places aren't full-time employees, so they have multiple jobs, they're all trying to find a better place, you know, a better living for their families, so, you know, we get some turnover with the EMTs, as does everybody, and this is kind of the same situation where these folks are looking for more, you know, and you can see, they both have some higher aspirations as well, so, you know, as they go through paramedic school, or go through their bachelor's program in emergency medicine, I'm sure we probably would see some turnover there. But with that said, you know, the way that we're looking at it is, we're hiring part-time employees, we're trying to fill needs, they're both qualified, and so we've made the hire based on, based on that. If you have any questions for me, please feel free to ask, otherwise I will report progress.
Thank you, Shane. President's business, I will be declaring an executive session for personnel issues with no action to be taken, and with Shane's permission, I would like to release the solicitor, and also Jonas could go home also. Correct? All right. With that being said, we will enter executive session at eight, correct?
I think we're good.
All right. We're reconvening at 9:17. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Councilman Hart, seconded by Councilman DeFrain. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. There's seven ayes. Meeting adjourned at 9:17.